I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item C, adjustment to the agenda.
Yes, I have one recommended adjustment to the agenda. It's the first read of three proposed new policies that the policy committee actually addressed back at the November meeting that should have been on the November agenda. So we can address those tonight.
We have a motion?
I move that we amend the agenda by adding the item that Mr. Higgins just described.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Item D, approval of minutes, November fourteenth, two thousand seventeen.
I move that we approve the minutes of the November fourteenth, two thousand seventeen board meeting as presented.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Four zero. Minutes for November twentieth, two thousand seventeen.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the November twentieth board meeting as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Four zero. Item E, communications and correspondence.
There were two letters of resignation that we received since the last meeting, and I believe those are circulating with the members right now. Take those up in our report.
Number F, public participation. Item G, administrator board reports. And I think we're going to start with you, Mr. Clifford.
Hi, you have my report. Most of my report has been with the VPA department. And I know that a lot of you saw Little Mermaid. And I think they put on eight shows and turnout was terrific and feedback was terrific. And I saw it twice and absolutely loved it. So it was a big hit. In front of you, you have a list of all the people, and it's a huge list. But it gives you a little glimpse of, you know, all the people that it takes to put on a show like that. And they do a terrific job every year. Upcoming events, so tonight is the art show. Just got back from that, and that's still going on right now. And then at seven o'clock, symphonic band and concert choir, they're performing tonight. And then on next Tuesday, that's jazz choir, show choir, jazz band, and other ensembles Tuesday night. It's the holiday year, and that's when we have concerts for the first time. So that's exciting. Winter sports have also started. There's one hundred and fifty-eight students participating. And right now, we have four hundred and seventy-three students. So that's a big number again. And those are starting over Christmas and this week and next week. So it's an exciting time right now with the holidays coming and winter sports in full swing, musical just getting done, art show. And so it's fun. We also just opened the art gallery today. And so if you come into school at any time, I can show you. And it's a room all by itself, and there's a lot of different works in there. From paintings to costumes that were in The Little Mermaid, and real excited about that. Tonight's the first night that the public get to see that. And the VPA department did a terrific job with that. It's really, it's really nice.
Where is that located, Dan?
It is, you know where the old athletic director's office was? That next room.
Oh, okay.
Yep, that next room. Down by the art, down by the art classrooms.
Nice.
Yep. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks. Mr. Newitt?
Evening. At the middle school, in school news, we've had two days of our fifth graders going down to Portland to do research at the Gulf of Maine Research Institute. Two rooms went earlier this week, and two rooms should be home right now. But it's a great event. Pictures were sent back to me by Mrs. Martel the other day. And just, kids are very, very engaged in the work down there. Keeping with fifth grade, DARE graduation is a week from yesterday, on the twentieth, next Wednesday. It's our second year having DARE back in the school, and there's a very nice ceremony. It lasts about an hour, eight-thirty next Wednesday. Woodlawn in town has done a marvelous job decorating their building with like twenty, it's twenty-six different rooms worth of Christmas trees. And we have three of our four grades going over there for the programming that they provide. So it's another nice community service that Woodlawn provides us. And I've had a lot of fun the last few days doing auditions in the morning for our upcoming talent show. So we have some good acts. And I think we got a band gonna try out, I think, next week, so we'll see how that goes. Mr. Marcozy may know somebody in that band.
I know a few people.
So it should be, it should be a fun time. Co-curricular news, we were fortunate to get a new chess coach. Her name is Tara Young. She has actually three kids in middle schools that are all three on the team, along with thirty-three others. So it's a really big team for us this year. And our first meet was snowed out on Tuesday afternoon, but we have two more. And we, because of our location, people come to us for those meets. And then at the end of the season, we go to Arno for the state meet. But it's nice that our kids don't have to travel. And we always do it when we have a home basketball game, because that's the only day the cafeteria is free. We have show choir tryouts next week on Monday and Wednesday. This is a much more select group of kids where the plays, it's almost come one, come all. But this, this is really, you know, there'll be a very select, I don't know how many, but the show they're gonna do is Hunchback of Notre Dame. So look forward to that. And we've got about three basketball games already under our belt this season. So our four teams for basketball and two cheerleading squads are in action. Parent news, we have our first ever complete standard space report card going home on Monday. So this will be much more lengthy document than what parents are used to, but filled with much more information. Part of that report card will include the students' habits of work, ratings. Those who have ratings of three or four, in every subject will be rewarded with a trip to the Criterion Theater to see Star Wars on January fifth. So we went there last year for a Star Wars film. They got the timing down right of the Star Wars film, again at this time of year, so we'll enjoy that. And the PTF did a really nice job. You walk into the building, it looks like a winter wonderland with a gingerbread house and all this snowflake designs and garland type stuff that they've put up throughout the building. So I thank you very much of a PTF. And now I turn in to Mr. McCluskey. He's at a rehearsal. And he's at a rehearsal for It's a Wonderful Life. And in fact, to segue there, our fourth and fifth graders will be going to the Grand tomorrow to view that play, which is like the radio broadcast version of It's a Wonderful Life. So that's another treat from the PTF that helps fund us going there. A thank you goes out to Mrs. Kellogg, who coordinated the group that grew from EEMS that sang and marched in the parade. She did a great job with that. I know there's, it seemed like well over fifty parents and students marching. So that was a really fun, fun day. We've had some, not just at elementary, but middle level as well, we've had some vacancies. And we've, Tim and I worked in the last week interviewing candidates together. So we should have most of those all filled in the next day or two. And he also mentions that the progress reports, as they call them, same deal. They go out on Monday for K-four students. A thank you from Tim goes out to Mrs. Clifford and her staff for training the teachers in the jump rope program. It's the first time elementary's ever really done an online grading program like that. And it's a learning curve. And so thank you to April and her staff. Mr. McCluskey is starting a leaders at lunch program. It used to be called Lunch Bunch, which you may have heard Amy Peart talk about in the past. Now he's adding to that the presence of officer, resource officer Amy Torrey to join him in these lunch meetings for all K-four students. And those will happen two or three times per week for the remainder of the year. And he says it'll be by grade level, and we will have discussions with the students about ways they can and our leaders themselves. Parent news, Tim does a nice job, as you know, with the parent volunteer trainings. He had another one December tenth. We now have over a hundred trained volunteers, which is pretty spectacular. The, at this point in time, there aren't going to, there is not going to be another evening training until springtime. However, if a parent has a need to want to get in the classroom or help out in some way, he will do kind of a private type of session, just have to contact the school. Last Friday was the first movie night of the year. Again, that's sponsored by the PTF. The movie was Elf. It was very, very well attended. So thank you to the PTF again for sponsoring that event. We had a PTF meeting today, in fact. There's another one coming up, January ninth. There are always the second Tuesday of the month from three to four in the library. And that's about it. Any questions? Thank you much.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you. Mrs. Bowles?
Evening. Amy Bowles from HCTC. Last evening, I had the pleasure of sitting with other executive board members for the Chamber of Commerce. We are working on a new strategic plan for the Ellsworth Chamber of Commerce, and we hosted it at HCTC. And we spent about four hours working with the facilitator and identifying our major goals for the chamber for the next couple of years and having some really good conversations about how our school system, particularly HCTC, can partner with the chamber moving forward. So that was very exciting, and I look forward to seeing our final product that I can share with all of you when it's complete. Of course, our big event coming up is our Holiday Buffet next Wednesday. We're anticipating larger-than-ever crowds next week, as our reservations are already way past where they were last year at this time. We'll be open eleven-thirty to one-thirty. If you have parties of six or more, we ask that you call the school to please make a reservation. As part of this, as always, we continue our tradition partnering with the kindergarteners of Ellsworth Elementary School. They'll be making the gingerbread decorations for the walls and doing the placemats for the tables. And then, as a thank you, we will host them the following day to give all the kindergarteners tours of the school and then to decorate gingerbread cookies with them and share milk and cookies. We will be hosting our second annual joint breakfast on Thursday, January eleventh. This will be the second year we do this. We'll be hosting all sending schools, superintendents, curriculum coordinators, high school principals, and guidance counselors, as well as our own, to talk about changes that have occurred over the last year at HCTC, things we expect to happen the following year, and to start talking about the next recruitment enrollment cycle for the fall. So we'll present that information in January and then look to start doing our visits in late February, early March. We took through our Melmat grant, over eighty students, to Hussin University on a Melmat field trip. Students from law enforcement, media, biomedical, and health occupations were the students we targeted for this field trip, although any student could attend if interested. But these four programs specifically had links with programs at Hussin and were able to speak with representatives from those specific departments toward those buildings that pertain to that department specifically, and then take a general tour of the school and eat in the dining hall. We now have our third student who's been accepted into the physical therapy program at Hussin University. So we are beyond thrilled about that, two of which are our Ellsworth High School bridge year students. And finally, I have spoken about how our biomedical students have been being placed for internships at Jackson Lab. But we have students doing some other really cool things as part of their year-two program in biomedical as well that I wanted to share. Ellsworth High School senior Sam Horn, and who is a bridge year student, and bridge year student Sam Leach from Sumner High School have started internships at the Genotyping Center of America. And they're working there two times a week to work on genotyping with scientists that are there. And they'll be doing their own research and working on genotyping experiments during their time there. So our hope is that by the end of the year, these seniors will be doing presentations of all their accomplishments to several of us at HCTC and members of the public if so wish, to talk about some of the neat things that they've done and explain their experiments. And then we also have started working on the Main State Science Fair. So we will be taking teams of students again this year through the biomedical program to the Main State Science Fair as well. Any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Higgins?
Good evening, everybody. You've got a written copy of my report. Just a quick update, in the last month's meeting, I had provided you with a preliminary October one enrollment count. Through a lot of work with the changing software programs in the Department of Education, and we won't go into that in detail, but it certainly has been a challenge. We do have the final certified results, and as you can see, overall, from last April to October, we're up forty-two students. And to me, that's attributed to many factors. One of which is the quality programs that we have and the quality of work that our teachers are doing. And it's showing that Ellsworth, that Ellsworth schools are a more attractive option for our students. So I'm pleased to report that. Even though you'll be taking it up later in the agenda, I wanted to give a brief update on the school management and leadership centers. In particular, the vote you took last month authorized me to research an invitation we had to sign on to a Part One application. My research provided a number of findings. One of them was that, first, was there any flexibility in submitting a Part One application as of November thirtieth and being able to withdraw from it prior to budget season? Even though there was no specific documentation available in the statutory language or in any of the guidance on the Department of Ed's website, I did receive some indications that there would be some flexibility. However, in digging a little bit further, what we found was that the school systems who opted in to the Part One application on November thirtieth would be included in the calculations for school funding to either receive additional funding or have their system administration taken away. And that was going to be part of the school funding report that's distributed to schools. A major concern that I had was that we may be building a budget based upon revenue figures that might not be accurate. Because there's a lot of word out there that of the twenty-three applications that were submitted, there are many school systems who submitted it as a placeholder, but are not certain that they're going to move forward. So that was one piece. There was flexibility, but in our best interest, I think we want to build a budget based upon as accurate of revenue figures as we can. As you well know, there are current and ongoing efforts by the Hancock County superintendents working on some regional collaborations that do not or will not result in consolidating into a organization that you can't get out of depending on how circumstances change. Those efforts have got a lot of energy behind them right now. An individual that you know very well, Jack Turcot, is working with us on one of them, doing a lot of legwork for us, gathering some research. So we're making some good effort there. And those efforts actually preceded the SMLC legislation. Regardless of what happens with SMLCs in the future, which will lead to my third point, those efforts are gonna continue to go on because each of the things that we're working on and talking about have the potential to improve our programming for students, enhance operations, and create fiscal efficiencies. And it only makes sense. It's with our neighboring school systems. Final piece in my research was the potential for change to the current SMLC law. First and foremost, there's going to be a new legislature, a new administration, starting in January two thousand nineteen. We don't know what may happen with that typical legislation that's in there. Additionally, there's legislation being put forth in this coming session that would serve to amend the SMLC law. One of them would be to take away the financial disincentives and also potentially take away the permanency of those organizations. Further, Superintendent's Association has recently done a position paper strengthening that last piece that we want to see the SMLC's implementation date postponed by one year. So instead of July one, two thousand eighteen, July one, two thousand nineteen. And there seems to be some energy behind that. So when you look at those three factors, the budgeting based on as accurate of figures as we can, current efforts that are already ongoing that preceded SMLC legislation, and significant potential for change in the current SMLC law, conclude that it would be in our best interest not to join the Part One SMLC application and focus on the efforts that we were working on. But I do appreciate the fact that the board thought it important enough to at least investigate those pieces and look out for the best interest of the school department. Other piece I'd like to report on, you'll be taking this up later in your agenda as well. Three resolutions, I reported to you last month. Two of the resolutions are coming from the Main School Superintendent's Association. One of them deals with a public expression of support for public education, which is not just a statewide initiative, it's also a nationwide initiative for the American Association of School Administrators, which is the superintendent's national organization. There's a second one that was adopted by the MSSA, the Superintendent's Association, which expresses support for the implementation of research-based redefining ready campaign, which are multiple measures of students being measured for college and career-ready. It's factors that are not specifically related to standardized testing. Things that point out well-rounded students and well-rounded educations they get at their local high schools. Third resolution you'll be taking up is one that was adopted by your association at the Fall Conference, which is a stand-up for public school campaign, which I believe is also a national campaign. And I think those are very important, and that's one of the reasons I wanted to include them in my report so that members of our viewing public would know that public education is a good value. It's the best value, in my opinion, for kids, and it's important that our citizens know that we support that. We have a number of new staff members since our last meeting. At the high school, we have two new track coaches, Darren Richardson will be our head track coach indoor, and Heather Colson will be assistant coach indoor. And as Mr. Newitt mentioned earlier, Terry Young is gonna serve as the chess club coach at EEMS. And we do have two letters of resignation. Greg Charchuk, who's a halftime maintenance person at the high school. And Stacy Grant and EEMS Ed Tech Three have both resigned to move on to other opportunities. And to conclude my report, I want to report on very sad news. Just this week, a longtime school department employee, Earl Gillie, joined the Ellsworth School Department, nineteen-seventy-eight, a bus driver and mechanic, unexpectedly passed away. For those of you that knew Earl, he was an outstanding employee, a fine man, excellent person, and he will certainly be missed. And I would ask that all of us here tonight just take a brief moment for silent reflection. Thank you. And that concludes my report unless you have any questions.
That's it. Thank you. Item H, committee reports.
I can report. The policy committee has not met this month. We are rescheduling that meeting, which will be determined tonight.
Okay. Old business, says none. Item J, new business. Student staff presentation.
We have been unable to schedule a presentation for this evening. However, when you go to option two, there will be a presentation from one of our staff members.
That's good. Okay. Item two, discussion and consideration of overnight out-of-state travel.
Do you guys have a copy of that?
It's on my, I don't have it.
Okay, well, I have copies if you'd like a copy.
It was, it was put online.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Lance. Eleventh Annual Boston Flamenco Festival. I know you're all thinking that we're going to France and Spain this year, and she must be crazy to still be taking a group of students to Boston. But a lot of students can't pay thirty-five-hundred dollars. And plus, there's a show choir trip planned for April vacation as well. So I have a bunch of show choir kids still asking, that are in Spanish club, that really would like to have the weekend in Boston. So this trip was requested, begged, actually. It was kind of funny. So it's the same trip. I mean, there are some changes every year due to things happening and not happening in the Boston area. But I just want to focus on the cultural and academic components of my trip. We eat in a tapas restaurant, which is a certain type of Spanish food, but it's also a way of eating. So I do teach them. We do a family-style tapas activity in class. So it's kind of cool to go and eat the food in a real restaurant. And they take a flamenco dance lesson, which is the national dance of Spain. It was created by the gypsies in the caves of southern Spain. So it's full in culture and storytelling. As far as, yes, there are opportunities to speak Spanish in Boston. A lot of people laugh at me when I say I'm taking my Spanish club to Boston. They speak Spanish with Ramon during the flamenco workshop. I mean, he speaks Spanish better than he speaks English. And he speaks Castellano, the Queen's Spanish, so he has that lisp. It's really cool for them to hear. The staff at the restaurant, they are mostly Spanish. I mean, they're, they're, they're all, you know, there are different nationalities of waiters and waitresses there. But there are Spanish speakers there. And the employees at the hotel we stay at, also, if they want to order an omelet in the morning, they have to speak to a man whose primary language is Spanish. So sometimes they, sometimes they dare to do it. It's nerve-wracking, but sometimes they, they do. They order their omelet in Spanish. But I think more importantly, you don't have to go to Spain or France to teach the kids how to be a smart, responsible, and respectful traveler. My hope is that these kids will travel someday to different places. And if I can teach them how to use public transportation and ignore crazy people in the underground, then that is, that is a life lesson. And I do need to mention that we have an awful lot of fun. So that's, that's the flamenco trip for the eleventh year in a row.
Eleven years, wow.
Yeah. I am crazy. Are there any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
I make a motion to approve the overnight out-of-state trip as presented.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsey.
First read of policies.
Dan, would you mind giving an overview? I didn't bring notes on those policies. Thank you.
As I said at the outset of the meeting when we amended the agenda, these three policies all come from Section D. They deal with bidding, purchasing, purchasing, contracting. And they were addressed at the policy committee's last meeting and were accidentally omitted from the agenda from last meeting. In essence, what we're looking at is Policy DJ, which is a proposed new policy for us. It puts in place bidding and purchasing requirements. It's not a required policy, however, it came about as a result of changes in procurement of funds for federal funding and federal projects, in which school department's attorneys have provided some documentation to deal with a federal procurement manual for main school units. In that, the recommendation was to implement a policy on bidding and purchasing requirements. So that's what you see in Policy DJ. And it is a first read, and it provides a mechanism by which we can do bidding in a court of main law and procurement methods for federally funded contracts. With required to the amount of funding that would be a limit for, minimum limit for when you would need to go out and bid, we consulted with the city charter and have implemented in there a five-thousand-dollar limit for projects that we would bid out. There are also some pieces in there that would allow you, depending upon what the project is, it permits you to go for an RFP process or to forego the competitive bid process, as long as it was reported to the board. Pretty much a boilerplate policy. So that's Policy DJ. Policy DJH is an existing policy that we have, which was purchasing and contracting, and it was a staff code of conduct for purchasing and procurement. The change that was made in this particular policy was to take the last section, which was dealing with conflict resolutions, protests, and claims, and remove it from the policy and insert in place a reference to the federal procurement manual that was put in place by our school attorneys. It's a much more lengthy and detailed document that addresses those issues. But it was the recommended way to go, and it puts us in compliance with statutory requirements. So from the policy committee's work, it was a recommendation from them that you approve a first read of policies DJ and DJH. The procurement manual DJR is for your review and does not require your action.
I make a motion that we approve the first read of DJ.
I make a motion that we approve the first read of DJ and DJH.
Second that.
Discussion. Hearing that, all those in favor? Second read of policies.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, but I believe these policies are as they were for the first read exactly?
Yes. The only changes that were made, I believe you folks as a group made suggestions at the last board meeting, and those pieces are in there, so they have not changed since then.
Well, I recommend, I mean, I move that we approve the second read and adopt the following policies as recommended by the policy committee. IJOA, field trips and other student travel, AEC, accountability, reporting to the public, BCB, conflict of interest, BBDA, school board declared vacancy, and BDG, school attorney legal services.
I second that. Discussion. I have a question. Were these amended before the first read, or?
What those are, IJOA is a brand-new policy that's gone through two reads with you. AEC, accountability, BCB, conflict of interest, BBDA, school board declared vacancy, and BDG, those were existing policies that you had. They're, they're not new. They were just amended through a two-read process.
Oh, okay, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Confirmation of teacher nomination.
Yes, you heard Mr. Newitt refer to the, some vacancies that we had at the elementary school and the middle school. And we're very pleased tonight to bring forth a nominee to fill our vacant grade seven position at EEMS. Be a position that teaches ELA, math, and science. Very pleased to present to you for nomination Laura Johns. Laura brings with her sixteen years of successful experience as a middle-level teacher and technology coordinator, mostly in schools on the Blue Hill Peninsula. She's taught in all three of the content areas included in the assignment at EEMS, and has worked with the MLTI project and has a solid and strong background in the sciences. A solid understanding of proficiency-based instructional model and sets high standards for her students and herself. Her references spoke very highly of her. And we're very pleased at this time of year to be able to add a candidate of Laura's experience to the faculty at EEMS. So I would recommend and nominate Laura for a first-year probationary contract as teacher at EEMS for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year.
I make a motion to confirm the superintendent's nomination of Laura Johns to a first-year probationary contract for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year.
Second. Discussion. Hearing that, all those in favor? Six, acknowledgement of acceptance of grant.
I believe you received this paperwork in your packet. This is a follow-up to the grant that was received.
Welcome.
Thank you. This is a follow-up to the grant that was received at the high school last year that funded our unified basketball program. Appreciate Mr. Frost's efforts to seek the same grant again for a second year. Pleased to announce that we've been awarded two thousand dollars to support that project. So what we're asking the board to do is to acknowledge acceptance of the Special Olympics Maine Incorporated grant, it's called the SUM grant, as presented.
I make a motion to acknowledge acceptance of the Special Olympics Maine Incorporated SUM grant as presented with our gratitude.
I second that.
Discussion.
Dan, how many of our students participated in that program last year?
Last year, I'm going to look to Mr. Clifford. I think we probably had between fifteen and twenty. Fifteen and twenty. And if you didn't get an opportunity to go to one of the games, it's really worth your while. It's an outstanding experience for our students, it really is.
Further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Thank you.
School board reorganizational meeting. Election of the Ellsworth School Department Board Chair for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
I make a motion to elect Brenda Thomas as board chair for two thousand seven, two thousand eighteen.
I second that.
Discussion. Hearing that, all those in favor?
Thank you.
And did you vote Mrs. Thomas?
I did. I did. I learned to vote for you. You have to vote for yourself, you know? Election of Ellsworth School Department Vice Chair for two thousand seventeen, eighteen.
I make a motion to elect Paul Marcosian as board vice chair for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
Second. Discussion. Hearing that, all those in favor? Item A, consideration of Main School Superintendent's Association and Main School Board Association Resolutions. A, Main Superintendent, School Superintendent's Association Resolution in Support of Public Education.
And I believe that was distributed in your packet.
Yep.
This is a resolution that was adopted by Superintendent's Association this past fall, the day prior to the Fall Conference. And it's part of a national movement to demonstrate support of public education as being a great value and a great program and the best option for students.
I move that we express support of the Main School Superintendent's Association Resolution in Support of Public Education, adopted by the MSSA on October twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen.
I second that.
Discussion. Hearing that, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Main School Superintendent's Resolution to Support Selection of Redefining Ready as Another Factor in Main ESSA Accountability.
This resolution deals with the definition of college and career readiness for students as expressed in the Every Student Succeeds Act. Superintendent's Association is endorsing the implementation of factors from redefining ready, which is a research-based initiative, that would allow as quote-unquote "the other factor" in addition to standardized test scores to be used in determining students being college or career-ready. So in addition to scores on the ACT or the SAT and GPA, there are also academic indicators and career indicators. The academic indicators would be things along the lines of advanced placement exams or advanced placement courses, dual-credit courses, college developmental remedial English or math courses, and minimum scores on the ACT and the SAT, but also career indicators. And these are of very high importance as well. At least a ninety percent attendance rate, twenty-five hours of community service, and of course, we expect forty hours for our graduates. Workplace learning experiences, industry credentials, two or more organized co-curricular activity participations, and military service. So the Superintendent's Association is strongly endorsing that and has adopted that as a resolution. And we're asking for a local school board support of that as well.
I make a motion to express support of the Main School Superintendent's Association Resolution Regarding Multiple Readiness Indicators as Proposed in the American Association of School Administrators National Redefining Ready Campaign, adopted by the MSSA on October twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen. The resolution supports allowing Maine the opportunity to select redefining ready as the other factor in the Every Student Succeeds Act Accountability.
I second that.
Discussion.
Dan, I just have a question. Is that supposed to be two thousand sixteen or two thousand seventeen?
Yes. This was actually done in a previous year. But along with the support of public education piece, our association and the National Association is looking for quantified counts of the number of school systems and superintendent's associations statewide that are adopting this. So we decided to bring it back for support at the local board level.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Main School Board Association Resolution Support for Public Education.
I believe this was addressed at your delegate assembly this year and was adopted by the assembly. And even though you voted to authorize our delegate to support that, Superintendent's Association, school board association is looking for public support of that in a statement as well.
I move that we express support of the Main School Board Association Resolution in Support of Public Education, adopted by the MSBA on October twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen.
Second. Discussion. All of us in favor? A budget update, okay.
This will probably will be the shortest budget update you have between now and the time the budget is adopted next June. The, our leadership team met on Wednesday, November twenty-ninth to begin formal discussion of the FY nineteen budget proposal. We do this every year, and the objective of that first meeting is to take the thirty-thousand-foot view of the school department and, or otherwise, we look at it as the big-ticket items, which includes staffing, potential new programs, modified programs. And talk about those with all of the members of the leadership team. It really puts into perspective where we're going as a school department and what the priorities for each of our departments are, also in support of our vision and mission. It's equally as important for us from pre-K through adult education as we move through the budget process. As we all know, the revenue side of the equation is unknown at this point in time. Although we received notice from the Department of Ed today, they're expecting to meet the statutory deadline for release of the ED two seventy-nine subsidy reports, which is February first, so let's hope that happens. But we won't know that for a while. This gives us an opportunity to get the expenditure side of the budget into order and gives us a basis for which further budget discussions can take place when the revenue picture comes into being. And as you know, we often have to prioritize as we move forward, but this gives the entire members of the leadership team the opportunity to look at what's taking place in other departments and how those different requests and how those different staffing requests may impact other departments and other schools, and how we might be able to work together to address some of our needs collaboratively. And I can tell you that there's one example of looking at staffing at the secondary level where Mr. Clifford and Mrs. Bowles looked at requests that they were both looking at and saying, you know, there's a way that we can work together on this. So there's a collaboration that takes place as well. So that discussion went very well. We'll revisit that list as we move forward through the process. We've also asked our principals and directors to present their budgets to our business manager, Carol and Helen Ramie, by the first week in January. And what that would include is all of the requests that come in from their teachers, their staff members, in effect, the balance of the budget other than those big-ticket items. Following those initial meetings, we will be in a position where we'll be able to develop an initial overall proposed expenditure budget and schedule meetings with the board's finance committee, which I believe you're going to announce before we leave tonight. And with regard to the timeline, our goal is to have a complete expenditure side of the budget by winter recess in February. Again, that will be just a first draft, but it'll be a starting point for ongoing discussions. And we know that it will also give us an opportunity to look at why we're looking and advocating for these staff positions, programs, significant items, so we can demonstrate to the members of our public that the things that we're promoting and advocating for are supporting the best education possible for the students of Ellsworth. In terms of that timeline, as we meet with the finance committee, finance committee members will have the opportunity to meet with each of our department people and hear their presentations, and then we'll spend the months of February, March, and April crafting a final budget proposal for consideration by the board's finance committee, you as a full board, and also the city council, and subsequently, the citizens of Ellsworth in the budget validation referendum. So we'll spend much time talking about that, but I think we're off to a very good start, and we're very optimistic that it's going to be a positive budget process. Again, one thing that we need to caution everybody is that with the multiple changes to the essential programs and services funding model, there are a number of changes to the staffing ratios, a number of changes to the weight given to certain student groups, such as disadvantage, they've gone from a weight of point one to point one-five, which will have an impact on the formula. The change in CTE funding, which we are still unclear on how that's going to pan out. There are a lot of factors out there that may present some challenges. But it's a good process. I know we've been through it before, and we'll come forward with a package that adequately and appropriately funds public education for the students of Ellsworth. Any questions?
One of the things that Mr. Higgins alluded to is that I, we've already chosen our committee members, so I'm going to run through this. Paul Marcosian, Joanne Avery will be on policy. Did I have that right?
No.
No.
No? Well, that started right off, right? So is it Joanne and Kelly?
Kelly.
Okay. And Rob and I are going to be on finance. Kelly and Paul will be on building and maintenance. Rob and Paul will be on personnel. Joanne and Kelly will be on curriculum. I will continue as the representative to the HCTC Advisory Board, and Joanne will be the person who is going to represent us on the dropout committee at Ellsworth High School, or for the school department.
And last year, Paul served as the legislative liaison. Will he continue in that role?
That sounds good to me.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay. Calendar's an announcement. Policy meeting to be announced.
Policy committee, we postponed our last meeting and thought we'd bring a date forward today. And in looking at the calendar, if we're trying to do it in December, I was going to put out dates of the nineteenth and twentieth. Although I did hear Mr. Clifford mention the twentieth, there is concerts going on at the high school. So I would suggest perhaps the twentieth at six o'clock.
That's the.
That's policy, policy.
I can't do that.
Okay.
The nineteenth.
Right, that's the. So those dates don't work. Okay. We'll go back to the drawing board, and I will have some dates set out then.
Okay. Uh, school board workshop. It's scheduled for the twenty-sixth, but that doesn't work for us.
So the question will be, are there other dates that week?
I think Paul's gone.
Paul's gone that week?
Yep.
Okay. Then you'd be looking at the following week?
The first week of January?
First week of January. You've got the second, third, and fourth.
Mm-hmm.
How about Tuesday night of the s- is Tuesday night the second?
Tuesday night is the second.
The second of January? Does that work?
I'd rather do the third, just because the first day back is school, is.
Yeah, I have a problem.
Could we, could we go six-thirty instead of six?
I don't have a problem going six-thirty.
Neither.
Okay, well, let's try for January third at six-thirty. Okay, and the next school board meeting is January ninth, two thousand nineteen, City Hall Council Chambers at six-thirty. Item L is German.
I make a motion that having no further business to adjourn the board meeting.
I second.
Second. Discussion. All of us in favor?